Call to order, the work session for the Hudson School District. Starting off with topics for discussion, we'll start off with the monthly budget update. Nick?
Yes, since Bonnie's not here, I'll take this one. So just kind of running through, if people have questions, feel free to kind of let me know. But as you can see, page two is just kind of where we're at compared to year-to-date, trending as far as expenditures and things along those lines. Part of what the expenditure difference for year-to-date is the fact that we've had construction expenses that we're paying out of the general fund, which is fund balance that we're utilizing. Do you scroll on down? That's why there was a big jump in our budgeted, I think it's on page three of that document, the general fund budgeted documented amount, or the budgeted amount is much higher than previous years because we built into the budget the spend-down of the fund balance for the construction projects. If you want to go all the way to page, the last page, any of the variances, so one of the things to kind of look at, if it has a single asterisk, that would be the expenditure ahead of previous year's budget or somewhat negative. If it's got a double asterisk, that means it's, you know, behind. The vast majority of these that are varying related to timing of purchases, as you look at that, also based on the feedback from the board, Bonnie said that she split out personnel services and construction services, so these are two different funds, or sorry, two different line items within the general fund that we utilize to make payments on the construction projects that we're using fund balance on. So, but the vast majority of these things are going to be timing issues, but right now, the budget's in a good spot. Don't see anything that's concerning at this point. Any questions?
No questions? Okay, going on to B, which is a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed $51 million general allocation refunding bonds.
Yes, so this was what Brian Brewer was here talking about at the last meeting. So this is to refinance, I just wanted to make sure everybody understood, this is about refinancing some bonds, it is not about taking out new bonds or anything like that, new additional debt. So essentially, the resolution, what it is, is it'd be a resolution setting the parameters to allow the board president and the board vice president to, or sorry, the board clerk to be able to sign whenever the market hits a certain point, you know, within the parameters that are outlined in this document, to refinance our $51 million worth of our bonds, not to exceed 51 million. So what we would need is a motion to authorize both the board president and the board clerk to sign those based on the parameters laid out in the agenda.
I did have a citizen reach out and ask if we had done things similar with the high school, or have done, or continue to do things with the high school referendum dollars, or could you comment on that?
Yep, so the high school, this is primarily the high school dollars. So the first 10 years of bonds, so we have 20 years, you know, we borrowed money for 20 years on the different projects, the first 10 years are usually not callable, and so that means basically we pay them as they go. And then the second set of 10 years, then they're callable, and basically because those are bonds that are outstanding for year 11 through year 20, the interest rate's a little bit higher, it's spelled out in here, by refinancing it, we'd be refinancing them with bonds that are due between years one and 10 with a lower interest rate, and then essentially saving taxpayers' money. I think the original prediction or calculations that Brian had come up with through Baird was going to save somewhere between $2 and $3 million in interest, that is just money we're not taxing for. So it's not a savings to the general fund, it is just reducing the amount of money we have to collect to pay back interest on the bonds. I believe on page seven, you can kind of see what the general obligation bonds would be and what they'd be set up for, the different issuances. So as I talked to the board last time, and Brian tried to explain, we don't take out money like a mortgage, we take out bonds, they come due at different times, so we make balloon payments, basically we pay interest on a bond until the year it comes due, and then we pay the whole bond off in each of those years. And so you can see, that's the outstanding debt that's sitting that we're talking about refinancing.
You have no other questions? I'll accept a motion.
What sort of motion are you looking for? What does it need to be?
So it would just be, it'd be a motion to allow the board president and the board clerk to essentially execute the purchase of these refunding or these refinancing bonds based on the parameters that are laid out.
Probably use that word again.
In the top, so. So a resolution authorizing the issuance and sale not to exceed the 51 million in general obligation refunding bonds.
Mr. President?
Yes, Brian?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the board president and board clerk to sign the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of not to exceed 51 million general obligation refunding bonds.
Second?
Motion from Brian, second from Kate. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. If you're none, that passes. Moving on to state report cards. Can I call on Shannon? She says that's not me, or this is me.
That's me. I'm on it. All right, so our state report cards came in just under two weeks ago, after our last came in after our last board meeting, and so I've just put together kind of an overview for you, a general overview, kind of the what, why, and how of state report cards. They provide us an overview of large-scale measures of school and student success, they've been in place since 2015. DPI report cards allow us to compare our student learning results over time and across the state, and we use the data on the report card to reaffirm or adjust our action plan that we formulate when we first receive our assessment results. So this year, we got our results in the spring, and so that's when we set our goals over the summer and have been, actually, we've been working on their goals since school started, so. The next slide just shows kind of a general, big-picture view of our district. So our overall score was 77, which exceeds expectations. You can see the priority area scores there, and then on the side, I've linked all the report cards if you want to do a little more digging. The next slide shows, it's a little cheat sheet, if you do do a little bit more digging, this year, the state updated the scoring formula, which kind of complicates things in certain areas for us to be able to compare year to year. So some of our areas were able to compare to last year, others, like achievement, were not, just because they've changed the formula on us. So until we have three years of this data using those, the same formulas, some things we can and can't compare. So if you dig in a little deeper, there's a cheat sheet for you. Our highlights, this year, five of our schools had significantly exceeding expectations, and three of our schools exceeding expectations. So you can see our schools are performing in the highest categories on the state report cards. All schools grew in the area of closing gaps with our targeted groups. So last year's report cards, we ranked in the 32nd percentile statewide, and this year, we were in the 51st percentile. So that really shows substantial growth in one year, and it also just kind of highlights that our supports and our interventions are having an impact on the students who need it most. Our achievement scores continue to be high. Overall, our percentile is the 89th, and showing ELA in the 90th percentile and math in the 89th. So just looking at some focus areas, like I said, we've identified, we identified those already when we got our, when we got our test scores back, the report cards just sort of cemented for us that we were going in the right direction with our focus areas. So we're going to continue making strides in growth at the middle school, they made significant growth, but we're still looking at continuing those strides. We are, you know, identifying team and grade level gaps that we want to address, subgroup gaps, and then our continued focus on implementing programs as intended. So our next steps, just maintaining our focus on increasing the number of students who meet proficiency expectations, and then continued growth for all students, it leads to higher levels of achievement in a given year, and then our sustained growth over time leads to overall higher levels of proficiency. The next slide just kind of shows our program improvements and our new initiatives underway for this year, currently implementing new geometry and algebra II resource, we're currently implementing new K2 ELA resource, as you remember, last year, we implemented that grades three through five. Implementing academic intervention processes and curriculum at the high school, maintain focus in the second year with algebra, with our algebra math resource, maintaining focus in the second year of ELA resource for grades three through 11, and then refining those personalized reading plans at the elementary level that we started with Act 20. Any questions?
Mr. President?
Kate?
I have two questions. One is, this always comes up when we do these test scores, is what is, because sometimes it'll, this is just an example, 60% of our kids are proficient in reading, so then people go, oh my gosh, 40% of kids can't read? So I think it's always good to revisit what that means when we do these scorecards.
Right, and then, you know, what's important to note is the proficient score is different than our percentile. So if you look at, like, our ELA scores are the 90th percentile, that means that they're scoring higher than 90% of the students in the state. So those are pretty high percentiles. That's a good question, when comparing.
But Shannon, can you speak to, you know, there's a difference between a child not being proficient, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they don't know how to read, and it doesn't mean that they're illiterate, or that 40% of our kids can't function.
Right.
Can you kind of talk through that a little bit?
Maybe you can help me out on that for, as far as the...
Yeah, and so I think, you know, this is the big one, you know, most people, the proficiency bar in Wisconsin is quite high, it's set by the legislature a while back, and so, and then, you know, DPI has kind of messed with it up and down and done some different pieces, but to be proficient, I believe it's close to the 60th percentile, give or take, and so 60th percentile is not looked at like grades, you know, people think of grades and they think 60% is a D minus, it's not like that. So if you think the average kid is going to be in the 50th percentile, right, so our average kid in the state would be in the 50th percentile, so when they talk about proficiency being more in the 60th percentile, you're actually saying, in order for a kid to be considered proficient, they actually have to be better at reading than the average kid. And so even some of the highest-performing districts in the state, the Allen Brookes, the Whitefish Bays, you know, are in the upper 70s and low 80s, and we're working towards that as we're getting there, and we are in the top 10% of the highest-performing districts in the state. It's just, it, there's just a lot of different factors that go into this. One of the problems with the state report cards is they keep changing the formulas on these things, and so it's very frustrating when you have, all of a sudden, you have a school that performs, you know, that had tremendous growth, but then they're exceeding expectations and not significantly exceeding expectations like the middle school. I think it's also important to know that the, there's, I think, five categories, significantly exceeding, exceeding, meeting, not meeting expectations, and then needs few expectations. And so we're in the second, as a district, second to the highest category, and five out of our eight schools are in the highest category. We are the highest-performing district, I think, in the region, as far as we look at all the contiguous school districts. I know there was just a big article in the paper on the River Falls scorecards and, or report cards, and we do outperform all of our neighboring school districts, and we're the highest-performing school district in our conference as well.
If you remember, yeah, if you remember when we set our goals around the 60, 63% of our students being proficient or advanced, that would put us in the 93rd percentile.
And I have to point out that I know that tons of that comes from parents at home that are helping their kids along, but also our teachers and staff that work in the trenches with those kids every day, so I think that's pretty amazing that our scores are so high. My second question was, if we're still doing the online tutoring program, I know we had a report about that, and I'm just kind of curious if we need to revisit how that's going, or what teachers are thinking, or survey students, so that was just a question.
Yeah, we get reports on those, and that numbers continue to increase, our students using that tutor.com.
Okay, great, thank you.
Nick, when you say leader in the conference, you mean the Big Rivers Sports Conference, or what?
Yep, yep, so we kind of look at things based on, you know, districts, you know, kind of by a CISA, by athletic conference, a lot of times, people will compare school districts, or they'll, we tend to try to compare ourselves with other very high-performing districts in the state, and our goal is always to be in the top half of the 10 highest-performing districts in the state, and if we did that, we would be in the top 5% of all high-performing districts, and that's kind of continues to be our goal as we continue to push forward. So I don't know if you were able to, if we're the highest in the CISA, I know for sure we're in the conference, but I didn't know.
Yeah, I just, I highlighted just the neighboring cities or neighboring towns and our Big Rivers Conference, and we were higher than all of those.
So for those watching, that's Eau Claire, Triple Falls, Menominee, Christ Lake, River Falls, New Richmond.
Yep, and I checked, like, St. Croix Central, too, just some of the neighboring ones, as well as our conference.
Okay, and can I ask, when you say implementing new geometry-algebra II resource, you mean, is that curriculum?
Yeah, curriculum, middle school and high school.
Is that a different curriculum that was in, that was put in place, or is this in addition to what was put in place, like, what, two years ago now, or was it three years?
This is the new, this is the new textbooks, and so they kind of get rolled, they get rolled out over a series of years, so as the kids kind of work their way through, they're getting used to using that new resource as workouts. So when we say resource, we mean, yeah, textbook.
Okay, okay. Because that's, you know, again, the gains in middle school after years of concern, I can't say enough how great we feel about that.
And they put in a lot of specific kind of interventions, you know, that where they're tracking kids that are falling behind, they're tracking kids, and they're calling, and they're meeting with them, and calling home, so I think some of those, those action steps have proven successful, too.
Thank you.
Mr. President? I'm just looking at the Hudson Virtual Charter School report card here, Shannon, and I, just for clarification, for anybody else who might look it up, the overall score says that it's not available, so I just wanted you to speak to that on the, because showing the proficiency at 91.7% is very impressive, but I can guess why it's not on there, because there's students that only select one class to take, and they're not full-time students in there, but just so you could speak on that, please.
Right, and then some of those, like, those prior, priority areas, if they're smaller subgroups and they don't have enough in a subgroup, then they, it doesn't, they can't calculate it.
You said, you said the virtual charter was at what, Erin?
Well, it doesn't show the overall score, I'm just looking at the one category that's listed on here. And I know the score, we were just, we just, there was just the meeting the other night, it was very high.
Yeah, yeah, because it doesn't have, it doesn't have any scores, a lot of it is because it doesn't have enough subgroups in order to report out as you work through it, and it's not a full-time school, but yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't actually have an achievement score per se, or girl scores or any of those things, that's why it's kind of, it's an empty, empty report card, but 91.7% of the kids in the charter school are, you know, of the enrollment, there's, it does show, they only look at full-time enrollment on that, and it showed 12 kids in the full-time enrollment, but, so, kids that are both in our charter school and our regular school would fall under the Hudson School District, or the Hudson High School report card in achievement points.
Right.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Moving on to selecting a deputy clerk.
So because you guys have the potential for a recall election coming up, and one of the people that is potentially going to be recalled is the current clerk, we'd be advised that you guys nominate a deputy clerk for the purpose of handling the recall election, should it happen, so there's no conflicts of interest. So this can be done if there's a motion, and only, you know, one person approves, and then you can do, do it by essentially unanimous consent, if there's, you can do it that way. If multiple people, you're going to nominate multiple people do it, then we have the ability to do secret ballot like we would for any other board position, so it would just be calling for nominations for the deputy clerk position.
Okay, do I have a motion?
Mr. President?
Brian?
I'd like to nominate Maria Rudy to serve as deputy clerk.
Second.
A motion, and second from Molly, now do I ask for, if there's any other people?
Yes, I mean, you're, first of all, you want to ask Maria if she's willing to accept the nomination, because that's happened in the past, where all of a sudden, somebody says, I don't want to do it, and then we end up having to re-vote.
Maria, would you like to accept the nomination?
I accept, thank you.
Okay, then, yes, you would call for nominations three times.
Are there any other nominations for this position? Asking again, any other nominations? And for a third time, any other nominations? Looks like Maria has it.
Well, now, now you would, yep, close it, and then take your vote.
Okay, all those in favor of Maria for being a deputy clerk, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none, welcome to the clerk position, Maria, if necessary.
You're responsible for any of the, any recall-related issues, and then if there's a recount on anything, Kate can give you some pointers on that.
I sure can.
So she had to have that fun this spring, so.
Okay, next is district communications to families. Nick?
Yeah, and I can have Tracy kind of chime in on this one, too, is just, we had a question about our communication protocol when it comes to whether it be sharing information with families on a variety of different topics, whether it be emergency topics, or informational topics, or school safety-related, I don't know if Tracy, if you have any specifics you kind of want to talk through a little bit.
I would just say, we don't have a specific protocol, we respond to each incident as a unique incident. It's usually done in collaboration with the building administration and district administration. In some cases, that communication also includes our legal counsel, especially if we're concerned about FERPA or personnel issues, and then the other pieces that, I mean, we try to communicate as quickly as possible with the most accurate information that we have at that time, and then, you know, there are some situations where it may include multiple communications, so I can think of, in the past, we've had a bomb threat, we would communicate to families about the threat, and then also follow up with a communication after we've done our, we'll go through the building, and then let families know what, what we found, if anything, and then also what we are doing the following day, or following days of that incident. So it kind of, it is all really dependent on the actual situation, and again, in collaboration with the building administration and district administration.
Mr. President?
Yes, Molly?
I just have a quick question. I don't know if this is related to why this is on the agenda, but there have been, you know, people who have, like, they, maybe they have an elementary kid, and something happens at the high school, and they're like, why aren't we hearing about this? Can you kind of go through how you?
Again, that's determined in collaboration with the building where the incident took place, it's good practice to always communicate to those impacted the most first, there may be situations that just are not relevant to all levels, so that's, that is not a decision I make, that's a decision that is done in collaboration with administration.
Thank you. Mr. President? I just want to say, I think the communication that comes out in this stuff has really been very transparent and very clear to families, so I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Very good, if there is no other questions, moving on to school board policy review and updates with Andrea.
Yes, and so this, last year, we did the 100 series, this year, we're doing the 200 series, and what I'm doing tonight is just sharing pretty much the as-is version of this 200 series, asking for feedback from the board if there's specific areas you want me to refine. The one thing that we do need to do is that there was a duplicative, duplicative policy of the superintendent's job description, so that's been deleted. Other than that, we are open to ideas that the board has, there aren't significant legal revisions that need to occur in this series in particular, so wanted to throw it out to all of you for consideration, as well as the classroom teacher job description. As part of our current policies, the board would be approving any modifications to job descriptions that are DPI-licensed positions, so certified positions, teacher positions, administration that requires a DPI license, all of that would be board-approved, and the classroom teacher one that you see up here is one that we are just updating, nothing earth-shattering, but it hadn't been formally updated for quite some time, and so we wanted the format to be more reflective of modern-day teaching in the classroom, and so we tried to make it both visually more appealing, as well as substantively more accurate in terms of the job duties, so that's where we're at with the 200 series.
Just for a reminder, the board, this is just your first look at these, this isn't even a first reading, so if there's anything specifically that the board says, hey, I have questions about policy 208, or 220, or whatever it may be, could you do some more research on this and bring it back, and we can work through those things before we bring it to a first reading? So then, what will happen is if the board's like, no, I think for the most part, you've captured what we want, or we don't see any major changes, then what would happen is at the December 8th meeting, it would go to a first reading, and then at the January meeting, it would go to a second reading, and then go into effect after two readings. But if people are like, hey, I want a little more time with this, we would just push it back and be first reading in January, second reading in February.
I can't believe no questions.
One policy we did look at, that we still may be recommending some modifications to, is the recruitment of administrators, where we do currently have language pretty, there's some discretion built in within that language, but knowing the market as it is right now, we were just looking at that as an area that we might refine as well, given some of our experiences the last few years in the application thereof.
I have a couple of questions. On the policy, the administrative staff evaluation, the 225.1, the last paragraph, I just want, I'm just looking for a little clarification, it says, "The superintendent shall be responsible for the evaluation of other administrators in the district, and shall either perform those evaluations him or herself, and shall direct blah, 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 the rest of it." So I'm just wondering, like, what the, the other administrators, I was a little confused when I read that.
So that'd be the principals, the cabinet team, and then?
Right, no, I guess it was the first part, "She'll be responsible for the evaluation of other administrators," so who is, who's responsible for the previous ones that you're talking about in this? Is that somebody else?
Uh, I'm...
Just seeking clarification.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not following, so this is saying that the superintendent, as an administrator, is responsible for evaluating the other administrators? So that would be anybody with an administrative classification, I would be responsible for that, and it can either be done through, directly from me, or it can be delegated out, so for example, the building principals evaluate their assistant principals, I don't evaluate their assistant principals type of thing. But the, the other, the other piece is, building principals fall under educator effectiveness, and that is a state system, but then there are other administrators that we have in the district that don't fall under educator effectiveness, but there's still a responsibility to evaluate those. So all the cabinet members don't fall under educator effectiveness, so those would be considered other administrators, assistant directors, things along those lines, those would all be quote-unquote "others" that aren't principals.
Thank you.
Yep.
I do have another question, if we're bouncing around between documents, under the job description for the teacher class, is that okay to move to that?
Sure.
I was just curious, because it talks about, and I don't have it pulled up in front of me here, but it talks about lifting and weight and stuff, and I'm just wondering if that's typical for the district, that we would want to mention the amount of weight expectation to be lifted, just because, I mean, that's pretty standard with healthcare, custodial, facilities work, you know, all sorts of other stuff.
Custodial, for sure, is, but actually, the trend in the labor employment world is to go away from specific amounts, because it really should be an individualized analysis as to what that specific job requires and does not require. If you have just one blanket statement, reasonableness and applicability is questioned.
Sure, okay.
Mr. President, I have a question. So staying on the classroom teacher one, I honed in on the professional growth and development, you have three... You have three, uh, bullet points. The third one, implement innovative teaching techniques and educational strategies. I wonder about that in relation to number one, staying current best best practices, who's assessing the innovation? And if the innovation is in support of best practices and effective teaching models. That's my only food for thought and consideration, and I'll let you guys make a decision and determination from there.
For sure, and I think, um, definitely we can have more conversation at cabinet about it. It was more, uh, just, uh, honestly, um, applicants sometimes look to our job description, it's a document that we post on weekend. And they ask about professional growth and development quite a bit. So having some specific items listed under there that are consistent with, maybe not that different then, but consistent with, um, other bulleted items, um, just because of the frequency of the question that we get, questions we get with that item.
Mr. President?
Yes, Kate.
Um, I have two questions. One is, under the administrators where you're, um, providing yearly reviews. So it says you review in the first year and every third year. And I just am curious if that feels like it's enough for, for you to evaluate people if you're doing it every three years.
Yeah, so what happens is, it's just the, that's, that part's the formal evaluation process, but we actually, um, just am finishing up tomorrow with the last principle. We do quarterly, um, meetings and go through their goals and go through all of those different components. So it's not, it doesn't wait every three years, it's just the formal educator effectiveness process. Uh, the state requires us to do a formal document every three years. And so they do informals in year one and two and then formal in year three.
Got it.
Yep.
And then are those documented?
Yes.
Okay, so the ones that you're just doing quarterly or yearly?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so the informals are documented through the educator effectiveness, uh, pieces.
Yep.
And then my second question was page two, number three, where it talks about, um, if you were looking for a new superintendent. So it talks about looking at past processes when you're going through the, um, general process. And I, I have not been here when we've been looking for a superintendent, so I'm curious if we're keeping past processes so that a board who maybe wasn't here would have that to look at?
Go ahead.
Instead of on, um, my assumption is that we, um, would probably defer, consistent with this policy, would defer to any kind of organization that assists us with that process as well. But I believe having been here for that time period, that we did comply with this language. But then it's really the outside organization coming in and bringing us their specific, um, outline.
Got it, thank you.
All right, if there are no other questions, um, moving on to board discussion about misinformation regarding school closures.
Yes, um, so there's been some questions and some things online, some things in the paper, um, that we wanted to make sure we get clarification on. And so we had Tracy put together this kind of facts about the Hudson School District's budget challenges and, and element, you know, elementary school consolidation. And so, uh, we wanted to have a spot where people could go, uh, if they hear a statement or, um, and, you know, what, you know, what that looks like. And so it's also on our website as well, and we're going to continue to, to add to it. But, um, what I'm just, was planning on doing was to go through this document and then, you know, uh, if board members have questions at any point, stop me on this. Uh, and then, you know, any additional conversation the board wants to have to address. But, um, you know, one of the things that we hear from people is the decision's moving too fast and there's been limited dialogue in the community. Um, and, and so, uh, what we did is we went through there that we've been discussing this actually for over three years. But in the last three years, uh, you can start to see a list of all the different community engagement events that we've had, uh, dating back to twenty twenty-two. And, you know, some of the different opportunities we've had for people to provide feedback as we've gone through that. Uh, in addition, um, we also put in here newsletter articles and also, uh, articles that were in the newspaper talking about, um, the difference, if you keep scrolling down to, yeah, if you keep going down again, you can start to see, you know, there were articles written in the Star Observer back in twenty-one and twenty-two and, and twenty-three, uh, where we were talking about these, these things. And so, um, and also looking for ways to get feedback from folks. And, and, and then again, pretty heavily talking about it in January and February as we headed into elections and things along those lines. So, um, so there's a document, there's also a document as well, uh, that Tracy has linked on our website that has a, um, all of our communications that we've kind of, where we've either had conversations related to budget, uh, or school closure items in the last five years. And I think, you know, well over a hundred plus, uh, opportunities for people either to provide feedback or hear about what was going on or the board discussing it at, at different times. And so wanted to make sure that, and they're all linked to the articles and linked to a lot of the different things that we have going on to make sure people understand, um, this has been an ongoing conversation. Although it seems like the board voted, uh, this, this fall, maybe that was quick, but it has been the culmination of years of, of conversation and what's going on. You know, misleading statement out there, the board has withheld information, how's it possible to make a decision when there's so many unknowns? Such as new attendance boundaries, bus routes, staffing and more. You know, the fact is, we have used, uh, data to make the decision, you can go to our website, you can see all the different data points. Uh, we've talked about it extensively about new attendance boundaries and bus routes, really need the attendance boundaries in order to determine bus routes. In order to determine attendance boundaries, we need to know how many schools that we're going to operate. And so, um, as all those things kind of work their way through and we've talked about during our transition planning, um, you know, we have made data-driven decisions now. Some people may not like the data, they may not agree with it, but, uh, they have been, um, data-driven decisions as we, as we work through this, uh, these different points. And again, you can review all the different documents, they're still on our website related to the school closures, um, and what that looks like. Uh, there's a statement out there, the district, state student enrollment is declining, yet new housing is being built. You know, the fact, uh, the fact is the last demographic study, which was shared in the, with the community and was done in May of twenty-two, uh, by Applied Population, U of M Madison, projected, um, data from the study extended to twenty thirty-one, thirty-two. So I mean, it was a study that was designed to be used for ten years. Uh, it is three years old, uh, we are in the process of finalizing the, the, the most updated, uh, enrollment study by, uh, MGT. And that information will be presented to the board on December eighth. However, it was important to note, and I think I talked about it at this, at a September meeting, or could, uh, I think it was the September meeting where I talked about, uh, and there was a slot, there were several slides that showed their enrollment projections and, uh, some slides that I talked about, we weren't even hitting their most conservative enrollment projections, uh, as we were working through there. Uh, and yet we, they did take into account new housing as it, as we worked through that stuff. And what, what'll be interesting, um, to see, and MGT has kind of let us know, uh, with this, part of what they're going to be presenting is the yield rates on new housing as well, uh, on December eighth. So you'll be able to see exactly about how many elementary age, middle school age and high school age kids we get from new housing on average. Um, so you can start to look and see where, um, you know, when, when somebody says there's going to be twenty houses or thirty houses, how many addition, or new students that those houses would have. I wouldn't say additional students because we'd also have subdivisions or areas that are older that maybe not have as many students. And so it's, it's not a net number, it's a, um, just a number that we would expect out of new subdivisions, but not necessarily adding to our student population. They're going to go through all of those different components, um, when they go through their enrollment study. Uh, and I think we shared a little bit of a preview that the enrollment study, when they gave us the preview, it, it's not showing as if we're, we're rebounding over the next ten years. We still won't hit equilibrium for the next three to five years in our elementaries and middle school, probably four to six years. And then the high school, probably six to ten years is when we'll finally hit the equilibrium.
Mr. President?
Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan, Nick, do you mind, what, what do you mean by the term equilibrium?
Well, the equilibrium is where we kind of are, are, right now, for example, we graduated a little over four hundred and sixty students this spring. We brought in, brought in a kindergarten class of three hundred and eight. So what ends up happening is, you know, you're going to have a built-in downturn in the, in the numbers until the classes that are in the high school are very similar to the class sizes that are in the elementary. And so in a district that is growing a lot, you would typically see the inverse. You would see smaller classes at the high school level and you'd see larger classes at the, at the elementary level. Even at the elementary level, what you're seeing is, you know, our first grade class, I believe is somewhere, um, right now we're serving about two hundred and ninety-five students. Our kindergarten class is three oh seven, three oh eight, uh, second grade is three twenty-six, third grade is three twenty-three, fourth grade's three thirty-four and fifth grade is three, uh, three fifty-two. So what's going to happen is if they believe that, you know, our, our average, um, grade size, class size across the district's probably going to be somewhere between two hundred and ninety and three hundred and twenty students a grade. Some of these bigger grades that are going to come out of the elementary work their way out over the next three or four years, we're going to see our elementary enrollment kind of start to, instead of constantly declining, it's just going to kind of be more even and be more constant. So, um, we'll hit that kind of new equilibrium point as we, as we work through that. And they're going to go through extensively how they got to those different points and also taking into account all the new subdivisions and things like that and potential subdivisions and what that looks like.
So, and, so equilibrium is kind of like the, the bottom end where things level off and, or don't go, continue to go down?
Correct, yeah.
And then start inching hopefully up. And in the public comment, there are public concerns too, is like, well, you're not, you're not taking into consideration the kids from St. Pat's and, and Trinity coming into the high school. That's why the high school is always going to be more than what you see in the elementary. And, yeah, but we, we pretty much know what we're going to get from, from Trinity and St. Pat's. So that works into that equation, so.
Yeah, we would, we would expect the high school numbers to be slightly higher than, than the elementary class sizes because we do pick up children from the two parochial systems. Um, but it's, it's not a hundred and sixty, you know, it's more like anywhere from forty to seventy students, um, as we, as we look at that. And a lot of it just depends on, depends on their class sizes as, as we work through it. I think, um, I was just, we were just looking at the, it's hard to know because between eight grades, um, Trinity and St. Pat's in twenty twenty-five, uh, had four hundred and thirty students. So if you divide that over, actually technically nine grades, because that's kindergarten through eighth grade. So, you know, you're talking roughly about fifty kids per grade between the two is what it is, what it is. And it could be more, could be less depending on the grade. So we take, take those into consideration, we would expect the high school to be slightly larger. Now, there has been talk about a parochial or Lutheran high school and there's been talk about a Lutheran or a Catholic high school. So, um, they can also look at that as well and put in some of those projections.
So the, sorry, just to, so I have it straight. So this year's fifth grade is roughly three hundred and fifty-six kids.
Three fifty-two, I think, right now?
Two.
Yep.
And so if next year's kindergarten is roughly around this year's, so around three hundred, right? And we kind of think that from our four K numbers right now.
Um, we think more than likely our next year's kindergarten is going to be somewhere between two eighty and three hundred. Because our, our four K numbers last year, um, were in the three forties, I think. And it yielded about three hundred and eight kindergartners. Because you gotta remember, there's some of those four K, uh, kids are open enrolled in and they go back to their home school, um, for kindergarten. So I would anticipate that, you know, our current four K numbers are three oh six. So more than likely, we could have a kindergarten class between two eighty and, and three hundred, so.
So just that fifth grade leaving this year, being replaced by kindergarten?
Yep.
That's fifty to seventy kids smaller?
Yep.
Our elementary enrollment will be fifty to seventy kids less.
That's what we would anticipate, is that we will be below nineteen hundred students next year at the elementary. Any other questions about that topic specifically? Um, we did also put on here, um, we have misleading statements and then we also put certain things that are just factually not, uh, not true, they're just false. The school district is holding a portion of UU property for a future school site. Okay, the board is holding on the sixteen acres, we've talked about this at multiple board meetings. The goal is, is that, uh, when the annexation happens for all the school property, the sixteen acres that we retain, because there already be utilities to that property, um, and it would be annexed, it would already be in the city of Hudson, that it would be worth more money, the board would be able to generate more revenue from the sale of that property for the school district. Uh, I know there was some information that was put out there related to our annexation petitions. I did contact the city last week, uh, I did, uh, we, I think have linked on our website a copy of the annexation petition that was signed by, I believe, Bob and Molly that you voted on. We did not, uh, do anything that said we are going to retain or change it to build a school down the road. Our annexation petition brings the property in at the same zoning it was in, uh, currently, uh, which I think is between ag rez, ag and, and residential. The process for rezoning, uh, once it's in the city, that happens after it's in the city and that's a rezoning process. So the city doesn't change the zoning when they annex property and it comes in at the exact same zoning requirements that, that it was in the township. The document that people seem to be referencing online is not a document that we've ever seen or that we've had. That was something that the city filled out when they, they did their department administrative services. We did not ask them to retain any of the property for public use or anything along those lines. There is not a, um, an intent to hold on to the property and build another elementary or anything like that. I know that's what's been going on out there. The intent of the property is to sell it, uh, when it is annexed in and has utilities close by for a higher dollar amount, so.
I think some of the confusion too might be that, you know, in the history of that property, it was, you know, slated for potential new school. And that's why they bought it.
Yep.
You know, fifty, sixty years ago, whenever it was.
Absolutely.
So, um, again, you know, just to put that at ease, this, this board has had absolutely zero discussions about the potential future use of that property for school. It is not the intent. Also, it is within a mile of another elementary school, so.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's quite a mile, but it's, it's.
Saying it is and I don't know. But, uh.
Yeah, no, there's, there's been no talk about building another elementary school there. And so, but it, the, and we've been very public about the intent to sell it at a higher rate, uh, once it is annexed in. There's a misleading statement, class sizes will go up and neighborhoods and families will be divided. The board is committed to maximize, maintaining existing class size guidelines. Individual families should not be divided in resetting elementary boundaries. There is things out there online where people are trying to say that we are going to divide families and we're going to send second graders to one building and fifth graders to another building with reboundery and that's just not, that's just not true. The way it works, when you go through rebounding process, you try to keep neighborhoods together so neighborhood, uh, go to the same schools. So if somebody had a first grader next year and a fifth grader next year, they would be going to school in the same school based on the boundaries. We wouldn't have two different sets of boundaries, uh, for the different kids in their building or in their house. Um, as far as the class size is being increased, uh, the class size guidelines would remain the same, eighteen to twenty-two in grades two, K two and, uh, twenty-two to twenty-seven in grades three through five. Now, one could argue that if they're used to having thirteen or fourteen students in a class and now they have nineteen students in a class, that yes, technically, maybe they're, what they're used to has gone up. However, the guidelines in which we, uh, do that, uh, have not changed. Also, one could also argue that, uh, if you're used to having twenty-six or twenty-seven students in your class and now they're down to, uh, twenty-four or twenty-five, that the classes, class sizes actually went down. Uh, when we built the models of about how many sections we would need, we built it around an average class size of twenty in K two and an average class size of twenty-five in grades three through five. Knowing that, you know, some might be twenty-six and some might be twenty-four, um, but, uh, that's, that's when we, uh, what we built it around. So I know there's some information out there, people are, are, are saying that we're going to split up families, that's just not true. And I know there are people out there saying that, you know, we're going to raise class size guidelines, uh, that's, that's not true as well. And we, every year put out, uh, for about six months, starts probably in April and goes till about September, uh, where we put out kind of the different class size assignments and things like that. So you guys are able to see and the public can see about what our average class sizes are for each of the buildings as we work through that. Another, uh, statement that was made, it was actually on, on the news, um, made by an attorney, that the school district asked for money to build a new school three years ago, um, and that we built a new elementary school three years ago. That's, that's just plain out false, that's just not true. We have not, uh, asked to build a new school, uh, the last school that was built, uh, was built in two thousand and eight, Rivercrest Elementary. Uh, I think the, the actual bonds or the referendum was in two thousand and six, uh, that passed, it opened in two thousand and eight. In two thousand and twenty-three, the board went to referendum to renovate, uh, E.P. Rock North Hudson and the middle school, which we've talked about pretty extensively at the board meetings, uh, as we went, as we went through this. So just to clarify for everybody, there has not been a new school opened in the school district since two thousand and eight. That was E.P. Rock, or I'm sorry, that was Rivercrest Elementary School. Uh, and at the time, um, when that building opened, uh, both E.P. Rock and Hudson Prairie had well over six hundred students in those buildings. And, uh, you gotta remember when that went to referendum in two thousand and six, it was the height of the market, uh, when everybody saw that Hudson was exploding and that there was no real end in sight. And so, uh, it wasn't until the crash of two thousand and eight and the Great Recession that we started to see a real big downturn in birth rate. eight and the Great Recession that we started to see a real big downturn in birth rates and, uh, yield rates as it relates to our kids and what that looks like. Uh, let's see here, I think, um, I think that is...
It's a repeat?
I think that's, yeah, that one's a repeat on the end there. Um, is, and we'll, we'll make adjustment to that, but, um, again, uh, if there are other things that the board members are hearing or questions people have, we wanna make sure we're putting out factual information, um, so that, um, people understand what we're trying to do here, um, as we work through it.
Mr. President?
Maria?
Um, there are a couple of ones that bubbled up recently since you guys put this document together. Um, one was, there was an announcement around a school consolidation plan, and this, I know you talk with Representative Zimmerman on a regular basis, and this is something he's talked about. Um, could you clarify what the intent is of the school consolidation plan and how that may or may not be something that Hudson could consider?
Yeah, if, if there was any type of, you know, incentive monies or things like that, um, you know, we'd definitely look into it, but, but the consolidation plans, as I understand them, as I've looked through them, is they're related to school district consolidation, so it's taking two smaller districts or two different districts to become one district to try to reduce the overall footprint of, of districts that reduce the number of, of school districts in the state, and so not necessarily related to larger districts reducing the number of schools they have in their buildings, but again, I haven't read through every single, uh, word of, of the different, uh, laws that they're looking at, uh, potentially trying to pass, but it is more geared around trying to incentivize school districts to consolidate more than just a school district to close a building.
Thank you for that. The other one that seems to be bubbling up is talking about, we talk about birth rates and birth rates declining, and I know folks have, um, gone out, there's a great data set, the WISH data set, it's run by the Department of, um, Health in Wisconsin where you can run, uh, county birth rates over an extended period of time. Um, I've looked at it myself, I looked at it in relation to kind of understanding what's going on, and I think there's a couple of things, caveats we need to understand with that, um, it's a county-level birth rate, it's not specific to Hudson School District, so every kid that is born in this county does not translate to a child that comes into our school district, um, nor does it translate into a child that goes to a school in this county, cause people do move, um, and people do come in. Um, I think the other thing that concerns me when I look at that graph is as it's presented, when you look at it from a very narrow lens and you use a, a Y-axis with a range, a very tight range, it shows year-to-year a very, what appears to be, um, fluctuating birth rate, when in fact, when you actually pull out and look longitudinally at it, um, with a, a, a more, um, sizable, I guess, maybe, um, uh, Y-axis min-max, it's fairly flat is what we look at. It's not increasing, it's not dramatically going up, it's not dramatically going down. And I think what I really look forward to in that MGT proposal is, I know this is something they'll be looking at more closely, so I'm hoping that that is something they can lift up in really understanding what the birth rates are doing, um, and their ability to speak to that, um, on December eighth.
Yeah, so MGT is looking specifically, um, when they look at birth rates at, at two different, uh, zip codes that, that fall in our school district, you know, the big one which is, uh, five-four-zero-one-six, there's another one that's kinda more up by the Holton area, but they're, they're really looking at, um, you know, those are specific area, um, not seeing any real change in the birth rate, uh, it has, you know, dropped drastically since two thousand and eight, um, it might be up a percentage point here, it might be down a percentage point, um, they look at a base year of twenty-twenty, um, COVID year, um, so it might be up one or two percent from twenty-twenty, uh, but overall maybe down twenty or thirty percent from, you know, our high. So, uh, even with, even with the birth rates in, we talked to them and they're gonna be able to speak to this much better than I could because this is what they do for a living, um, they're gonna be able to specifically, um, ex, you know, talk about that and, and be able to say, okay, here's, here's what it means. Also, um, as you said, the county birth rates are different than just school district stuff, so if you have other districts that happen to be growing or having, um, you know, more student growth or, or different things going on, you're gonna see that their birth rates are gonna mask some of the issues that we're gonna have.
Mr. President?
Any other questions for people?
I, I just want another last comment or thought, you know, it, I actually might suggest moving the neighborhoods and families divided up to a false statement. I think that is, that's a, something we know is not true, it did not happen with the last reboundery, I can speak to that from personal experience. It was, uh, a North Star and something that this, that the district in the boundary, reboundery process held to very closely, um, and so it's, I wouldn't label that as misleading, um, I think it's actually inaccurate.
Totally. Other questions related to kinda misleading or false statements that people wanna address or have a conversation about?
Um, I would, I would add that some of the things I'm hearing or seeing online are, you know, rush, you're making this rush to move forward without, without the right data or the up-to-date data or, uh, you should, you should be using, you know, a new demographic study, busing, rebounding should all be done before you even took a vote. Um, you know, I point to like Waukesha closing three schools, deciding, voting to close three schools and merge a middle school, I believe. Um, you know, a month and a couple, a month and a week after we did, in less time, I don't believe I looked, I looked and see anything about, you know, them having that all done, or, I mean, it's, I think in the community, it's easy to say, you should have all that done first, and, and we, we can talk about how it's, it's inefficient to try and do a boundary study, um, when we don't know what those boundaries are. So, um, I don't know if anybody else wants to voice an opinion on that, I just think that's, uh, something that is out there in the public and it, you know, on face value, it ma-, it makes sense, right? But when, when you think about it, when you look at it, it's, you know, I don't know of any other school districts that do all that before they make a decision. I don't know, I'll just throw that out there if anyone wants to comment.
Mr. President?
Yes, Molly?
Mr. Bob? Um, no, I completely agree with you, I, I mean, we decided in August that we would close one school, we didn't know which until we went into the meeting and went through the process and did all the, uh, the things and, at the October thirteenth meeting, so it does feel a little bit like, that's a, that's not a simple thing to go ahead and do a, another demographic study and do a reboundery, it's, it's not the easiest thing to do, and it's just like, we have no idea how this is gonna go before we go to the meeting at all, we, we don't know what people are gonna vote, so I, I just think it needed to wait until after it was done, and I just, um, just to echo a little bit of what Maria has said about birth rates, it's just, every day I look at something, or I listened to a podcast today about, um, you know, deaths are larger, or we are outpacing deaths or outpacing births in our country. Um, and in ten years, I've said this before, in ten years without in migration, our population will start to decline, and it, we aren't seeing it, or, it's hard to see that on the macro level when we're in our community, but it is happening. Um, and one of the things that I was listening to is, um, from millennial women on, is there are so many choices to delay childbirth and to use contraception and things like that, no, n-not casting shade on anybody for their choices, but, you know, people have more choices, more women are single. Um, and then I look at my own kids and their inability to, um, this generation, Gen Z, to afford life, so we have a real problem in our country that's bigger than what we have going on here, but we're seeing the impacts of it, um, you know, front and center in Hudson. Just my two cents.
Yeah, Bob, just kinda building what you said, so Wausau has voted to close four elementaries, Kenosha has, uh, closed, um, multiple buildings, you know, Waukesha just, uh, voted to close elementaries, Green Bay, um, voted to close elementaries, Waukatosa is considering closing two elementaries, La Crosse is closing elementaries, um, West Alias and, uh, Cudahy, uh, school districts are, uh, gone through school closures in the recent years, and so there's, uh, there's several lists on the Wisconsin Department of Public Construction School Directory, um, they have a list of all the districts and what buildings have closed, a lot of them are, uh, you have to kinda sort through because a lot of them are charters that didn't quite make it, um, that had very few students in them, but you can get on, you can get on there and you can actually see, um, normal brick-and-mortar schools that, that, uh, or public schools and districts that have closed, uh, buildings, and there's, uh, quite a substantial amount. It's something that's gonna continue to, to be a challenge, uh, for public schools across the state, um, as enrollment is gonna continue to, to be a challenge, and I know there's been multiple, um, articles in the paper and, and, uh, you know, and national publications about the decline of the number of students that we have. I know even higher ed, if, uh, Megan was here to talk, she would talk about higher ed's concern about fewer graduates coming out of, out of high schools, which is, is essentially really impacting especially, uh, independent, um, liberal arts schools and things, smaller schools and things along those lines, and so, um, it is, it is going to continue to happen, uh, it's just kinda hitting us probably a little bit sooner than maybe some of the other districts, uh, in our area, but, uh, it, it's definitely, definitely a challenge for us, so. But I just, we'll continue to add to the fact sheet and, um, as information comes out, and we'll try to, uh, make sure that we're setting, uh, correct information out and trying to find a balance, um, as we, as we work through here, but all of the information that people are using is on our website, it has been on our website, um, as we, as we go through that, I just wanted to make sure people drew people's attention to it since we've, we've had some statements that aren't, aren't factually accurate, so.
Kate?
Uh, I, I just wanna close that out by saying, I mean, there's all of this going on in our community, but there's also really amazing things going on in our community and really attentive, amazing parents and community members that know that when this all occurs, it's gonna be okay, that we have, like you, when we talked about this, the scorecard, we have an amazing school district with clearly amazing talented teachers and kids that are awesome and parents that are doing everything they can to make sure that their kids have everything they need, so, um, I just wanna continue to reassure people that we're gonna be okay, we're gonna get through this.
Thank you, Kate. Any other comments? If not, uh, we'll move on to board discussion about regarding school closures.
So, um.
Oh, wait, the planning.
It, yeah, yep, it's just a planning update, kinda, you know, I'll have, turn it over to cabinet team members, uh, kinda give an update since they're in charge of a lot of the committees, but, you know, before I get, turn it over to them, I just wanna give the heads up that MGT will be here on December eighth, they will be presenting all of their data, um, they will be able to kinda, you know, please make sure you bring lots of questions for them, that's what they're here for, this is, this is what they do, they're experts in this. Um, I know that, you know, some people have said it seems like the meetings are very close to each other in January as it relates to the boundary committee meetings, you have to understand this is what they do, they will be running those boundary committee meetings, uh, the committee meetings, they will be getting the feedback and helping, uh, facilitate that, they'll also, on, um, December eighth, not just them presenting, but they're also gonna be working with the board to set your parameters around the boundaries and, and guiding principles of what you guys would like to see done as they create some different examples for people to respond to. Um, so that, that boundary committee, um, or the boundary, uh, process, um, is, is really gonna start to move relatively quickly after the December eighth, when I say quickly, I just mean we're actually gonna start to see information and, and move stuff out, um, but they can, they can make adjustments to the boundaries in real time, I mean, that's one of the things that's unique about their software is, you know, as they've broken our district into two-hundred-and-fifty different planning zones, um, they're able to move and highlight different zones and move them in different boundaries and automatically start to see how many kids are in that building, but not just how many kids, how many first graders, second graders, third graders, fourth graders, um, because sometimes people think you can draw, easily draw a boundary one way or another, well, what can happen is you can end up with eighty-eight third graders and only twenty-two kindergartners, and that doesn't work very well for us, and so, um, you know, that's why, you know, when people put what they think the new boundaries are gonna be online, it's hard to do that without knowing where our kids live. Um, now, there are some natural things in our district that are immovable, right? We have a big state park, we have a big lake slash river, um, that's gonna create some, some natural movement as far as the boundaries and things like that, so there's only so much adjusting you can do, but, um, there will be kinda moves and tweaks as we go through this and, you know, as, uh, we get through that process, so I don't know if Andrea or Shannon or Terry want to speak to the staffing side of things?
Sure, yeah, we've already had, um, the second round of meetings last week, and we were able to develop a draft survey for our staff, both for the certified staff survey as well as the support staff survey, and we had consensus amongst all the team members to move forward with the questions that we've drafted, so we're gonna be finalizing that, um, this next week and sending that out as planned on December first, and that'll be open for a week, uh, till December eighth, and then we'll start the process from there. Um, we will be strongly encouraging participants, um, or people to respond to the survey, we did go out to building forums and go through all this as well, so really trying to make sure that we're honoring our guiding principles as we're, uh, beginning this work.
I can do a quick update in student and family, we are meeting tomorrow, we have an early release, so we will be meeting with a small group of teachers to talk about transitions specifically for students with disabilities, so that will take place tomorrow after students are out of the building, we'll come up with some ideas, proposals, bring it to a larger group, including admin, and then next step for families.
I maybe can just speak to some of the other work groups that we've all met at least once and brought to, brought to the table, the stakeholders that are in the beginning stages, you know, with some administration, and then they'll be working individually, and then we'll be bringing in, um, community members and other staff members and teachers as well as we get further down the road.
Okay, any questions? Erin?
Can we get a copy of the questions that are being asked? Andrea?
Yeah.
Just so we know, as a board?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Okay, if no other questions?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, I had a question. Um, I've gotten some questions about four-K and, um, I know late breaking at the end of last spring, summer's legislative session, there were some changes in how four-K is funded at our private, um, partners, um, I think, do they get like double the funding? The projection is doubling their funding? But really what I wanted to get at is, if you could, Nick, talk a little bit about that, but then also four-K planning and sign up, and maybe we don't have all of those answers right now, but, um, there's some concern about registering for the, the private four-Ks versus knowing which elementary school, you know, if you have older siblings, your second grade brother is gonna go to this school, so I wanna go to four-K then.
Yep.
And how, and maybe we don't have that all lined up, but, but it'd be useful, I think, to, to lay out those pieces to make sure families have the option once they know, you know, their little bro-, or their big brothers go into North Hudson, that they can go to four-K at North Hudson.
Yeah.
Versus getting a spot at a private provider.
Yeah, absolutely, so we, um, so four-K and kindergarten roundup will be happening, you know, in February after the board sets boundaries, and so, um, well, people wanted to know where, where their, where their boundary is, um, we have every intent of having, uh, spots in each of the buildings for it, uh, we believe we're gonna have room for wrap care in each of the buildings as well to go along with it, uh, but the, the way that, I think it's called Get Kids Ahead, I think is the name of the legislation that was passed in the eleventh hour of the budget, uh, which was in lieu of our special ed funding that we were hoping to get, uh, raised the amount of reimbursement that, uh, private providers would get if they provide four-K, uh, so what our private providers have asked is can they wait until after September, or, sorry, February first to decide if they're gonna be part of our four-K programming or not, because that's when the deadline is for the new state program and what that, and what that looks like, and so, um, we will be having, like I said, we'll be having that four-K registration after all of those, those pieces of information come in, so after you guys have set the attendance boundaries, after we know which providers are gonna be part of our programming, um, and then we'll go from there. Um, kindergarten roundup, uh, again, we, we're waiting to do the kindergarten registration until after, um, boundaries are set, so people are able to register for the school in which they go to, so. Um, right now, I mean, the goal would be for the board to be able to act on, on attendance boundaries at the February ninth meeting, but as late as the February twen- but as late as the February twenty-third meeting.
Mr. President.
Yes, Maria.
A question or comment about boundaries and then a question. I appreciate you walking through, Nick, MGT's approach. Having participated in the last boundary committee, I wouldn't, one of the things that I really like about MGT's approach is the ability to, in real time, adjust those boundaries. That was one of the biggest pinch points for the last committee where we would ask and couldn't get, we had to wait weeks, if not months, to then see it. And then it would be like, wait, what did we ask? And what's this refresher? And it was a lot of revisiting conversations so that I I appreciate that. And I think that helps move that conversation along faster. The other thing that I really like is there's more opportunity for the community as a whole to participate and comment in it rather than a group of forty individuals working. Each each approach is its own, has its own pros and cons and values. We've done one, we're doing another, and I think that's okay. And I think there's value to trying a different approach, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. One of the questions that I've been getting about boundaries is what about fifth graders or fourth grader soon to be fifth graders for next year and their ability to say, I want to finish all my elementary years at this school that I've always gone to, even though that's, that may no longer be my home school? Is that something we'll be able to honor? What do you, what, do we set that as a goal?
No, we would not be able to honor that necessarily. Now, people could put in for a boundary exception like the normal process. But again, those go through our normal process. The board has a policy set out for that. But and I think there, you know, some of the rationale behind that is for fourth graders going into fifth grade, both at Willow and at Holton, they won't be able to select that as an option either. So I believe if if our kids that are both Holton and Willow that are going from fourth and fifth grade can make that transition, our kids in the other buildings will be able to suffice and make those transitions as well. If there's room based on boundary exceptions, that process, you know, we can, we can go through that. But that's a pretty spelled out process. It is in, it is in board policy, so you guys can look at that. We have, unless you guys are wanting to bring it up and change it, it's been a policy that has served us quite well since it was redone in two thousand and eighteen. It's very spelled out as to the order of operations and what that looks like. So that's, that's kind of the the thought process is there wouldn't be a grandfathering in period or anything like that.
Thank you for your clarification. We appreciate it.
If no one else has anything to add or question, that would bring us to the end of our agenda, so I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. President, I motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Erin. Second. Second. Second from Brian. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.